All right, well, good evening to everyone who's here. Mayor Daniels is not available tonight, so I will be beginning this meeting. And this is my first time, okay? So the training wheels are off, and it could be a little bumpy. Might skin my knee a little bit here, but we'll give it a shot. All right, so first of all, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And we're going to start tonight with something that's very near and dear to my heart. And to do that, I'm going to invite Mario Diaz and Sergeant First Class Maurice Liggins up, if they can come join me up here. And basically, what we're doing today is we're celebrating the 242nd birthday of the United States Army, which is a pretty significant thing. And so what I wanted to do was give these two gentlemen, I guess only one of them wants to speak, I asked them beforehand, but I just wanted to give them a chance to tell us a little bit more about the significance of this today and talk a little bit more about what the Army does for us. Seems kind of obvious to me, but we'll do that now.
Councilman, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity, and to our firefighters and law enforcement, thank you for all you do. I'm Mario Diaz. I am what's called a civilian aide to the Secretary of the Army. I represent the Secretary of the Army in Arizona. I've been on this position for five months now, and my role is to work with families that have loved ones in the Army, work with soldiers to make their lives much better, and work with the community to recognize the good work that the United States Army does for our country day in and day out. And with me is a member of one of your recruiters here at the city, at the town of Gilbert, Sergeant First Class Liggins, and he'll introduce himself briefly.
Good evening, council members, citizens of Gilbert. I am the center leader, which means I run the recruiting center that is located in your wonderful town. I'm also a resident of Gilbert as well. I am from Millisville, Georgia. Of course, you can tell by the accent, but I'm here today to make, to let the community know that the Army has a local representative in the area in case anybody's interested in getting some information about how the Army can help change their lives or what we can do to help and volunteer within the community. So we're here, we're proud to be here. Thanks for having us. I love Gilbert, Arizona. I purchased my house here, so, and I'm not selling it.[174.18][174.18](Laughter).[175.18][175.18](Applause).
You know what I'd like to do also before we proceed is I would like to invite any who served or have served in our armed forces or any of our first responders, if they'd like to stand up, I'd love to recognize them for a second. Do we have any here? All right, let's give them a hand.[196.56][196.56](Applause). We as politicians really can't do anything without these men and women of valor. We would have no freedom to exercise here together, and so we are so grateful for that. And the proclamation mentions this, but George Washington had a real problem trying to keep an army together, and it really illustrates how important that is, that it continues to go forward and to protect our liberties and our way of life here. So truly humbled and truly grateful for that. I'll share a few words from this proclamation. We'll get another applause and we'll have a picture together, okay? Whereas on June 14th, 1775, the Second Continental Congress representing the citizens of 13 American colonies authorized the establishment of the Continental Army. And whereas the collective expression of the pursuit of personal freedom that caused the authorization and organization of the United States Army led to the adoption of the Declaration of Independence and the codification of the new nation's basic principles and values in the Constitution. And whereas members of the town of Gilbert have proudly served and made the ultimate sacrifice for our nation's freedom while serving in the United States Army and other branches of our nation's military, now therefore, Jen Daniels, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, recognizes the historic significance of the 242nd anniversary of the United States Army and calls upon the town of Gilbert to issue a proclamation and hereby proclaims and signs here on June 1st, 2017, as 242nd birthday of the United States Army. Let's hear it for our Army.[309.12][309.12](Applause). Go ahead, Eddie.
Well, Councilmember Peterson, you did awesome. I didn't see any skinned knees or bruises. Could I have anyone from our Parks and Recs Department come up here with me, as well as any of our board members, to receive this fantastic proclamation? Well, Bob, I think, well, Rocky, there we go.[381.71][381.71](Laughter). Well, first of all, why don't you guys introduce yourself and your role as relates to Parks and Recs?
My name is Rocky Brown. I am the business manager for our Parks and Recreation Department. I've been here since October.
And I am Bob Farron, and I am the vice chair of the Parks and Rec Board and have been in that capacity for four years now.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Well, this proclamation, as you may know, and as we'll share with our community, in the month of July, it's going to be Parks and Recs Month. So this proclamation, as you both will receive, is about that. So let me read some of the fine language in this proclamation. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Gilbert, Arizona. And whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and the region. Whereas Parks and Recs programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreational services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. Therefore, on behalf of Mayor Jen Daniels, do hereby proclaim July is recognized as Park and Recreational Month. May we have a round of applause for our Parks and Recreation team and board.[500.18][500.18](Applause).
I want to invite up Representative Travis Grantham, who's here from the state legislature. Come on up, Travis. Also invite up Annie Remsberg. This is appropriate, and we'll talk more about it in a minute, that Travis is here representing the state legislature for a number of reasons. One is his efforts on this, but also if any of you look up in the sky about every other week or so, maybe once a month, you'll see Travis flying one of the big refueling airplanes that will refuel the F-35s, among other planes. And so not only is Travis here representing the state legislature, but he probably wouldn't admit it, but we appreciate his efforts as a member of the Armed Forces. In November, the town of Gilbert signed onto the Elizabeth Dole Foundation's Hidden Heroes Initiative, which raises awareness and provides support for our military, family, and caregivers. Travis is a representative here from Legislative District 12, which covers Gilbert, among other places, at the same time was working at the state level and had the state of Arizona become the first state to be a part of this. And so I'm actually going to pass the microphone over to Travis. He will introduce Mrs. Remsberg here, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, sir, and thank you all very much. What an honor on Military Appreciation Month to be able to stand up here and present what we're about to do. And I do want to say that this wouldn't have happened without Mayor Daniels' full support. It was her idea from the onset. She came to me. I actually screwed up the process early on, and then we fixed it, and we got it through the state legislature, or as we like to call it, the sausage grinder down at the state Capitol. But when I learned who Annie was, and I heard her story about her son and his injuries that he received in war, and came back with severe disabilities, and she now cares for him, like a lot of family members do. And not many people understand what these folks go through. I was introduced to the Elizabeth Dole Foundation through Annie, and I'm proud to say Arizona, and correct me if I'm wrong, we became the first state to actually designate the day based on the resolution that I'm about to read to you all. So what we have here are two copies of House Concurrent Resolution 2025, which was passed into state law this session. We're going to present one to Annie tonight. We're going to present the other to the town of Gilbert. And they have the original stamp and all the signatures of the Speaker, the President of the Senate, and the Secretary of State, who put this into actual law. House Concurrent Resolution 2025 is a concurrent resolution expressing support for military and veteran caregivers and proclaiming May 20th, 2017, as Hidden Heroes Day in Arizona, the first state. Whereas the series of wars in which our nation has been engaged since World War II has resulted in five and a half million military and veteran caregivers who are parents, spouses, siblings, and friends, caring for the wounded, ill, or injured heroes who have served our nation. And whereas the daily tasks of these military and veteran caregivers can include bathing, feeding, and dressing wounded warriors, caring for their grievous injuries, administering medications, providing emotional support, caring for the family and the home, and working outside the home to earn essential income. And whereas the nation provides multifaceted support to our wounded, ill, and injured veterans and service members through public, private, and philanthropic resources. And whereas most military and veteran caregivers consider the challenging work they do as simply carrying out their civic and patriotic duties without realizing that they are in fact caregivers and do not identify themselves as such. Whereas according to research conducted by the Elizabeth Dole Foundation, an alarming number of military and veteran caregivers are suffering numerous debilitating mental, physical, and emotional effects as a result of their caregiving duties. Therefore, be it resolved by the House of Representatives of the state of Arizona, the Senate concurring, that the members of the legislature support the residents of Arizona who are serving in the vital military and veteran caregiving roles, that the members of the legislature encourage all who care for and support veterans and service members to also extend support to their caregivers, and that the members of the legislature proclaim May 20th, 2017, as Hidden Heroes Day in Arizona in conjunction with Military Appreciation Month. Folks, Annie, well deserved.
I'm going to pass the microphone over to Annie. You may have heard the last name Remsberg a few times. We don't oftentimes get the President of the United States to come to Gilbert. One of the few times the President has come was to visit her son. And we hear a lot about Cory and his heroic actions and all that he's done for both the town, the state, and the country since then, most of which would not be possible if it weren't for Annie. And so we really appreciate all that she has done, all that she continues to do, and we'll have her say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. A special thanks goes out to Mayor Daniels, who, although she couldn't be here, believe me, she is the driving force for our cause. I would also like to say a special thank you to Representative Grantham, who picked that ball up and ran with it on a state level. And we all should be proud as Arizona citizens that our state is the first state to recognize the Hidden Heroes Campaign, the hidden heroes being your caregivers of military veterans. So please, if you know of any caregivers that are in need of anything, whether it's financial aid, legal aid, just someone to talk to, support, whatever it is that caregiver may be going through, please have them go on hiddenheroes.org and also reach out to me personally. I thank you again, and we appreciate all the support that the town of Gilbert has given us. And my son Cory said to be sure to say hello to everyone.
You know, celebrating our citizen heroes here in Gilbert is one of our favorite things to do, because I think our citizen heroes represent the real spirit of Gilbert. And we have a very special presentation tonight, and from what I've read in the background, it wasn't anything less than a family affair in this award that's being given tonight. And I'm going to invite Chief Joe Bush to come up and give a little bit of background on the Curtis family and what happened and why we're celebrating.
Thank you. Why don't you guys come on up and join me? Don't be shy. This is your 15 minutes of fame for today. In the Fire Department, we have an award that we give out. It's a Citizen Hero Award, and we really save it for those special occasions where a citizen goes above and beyond in helping someone who's in need in a fire or medical emergency. And we're often called the first responders, but really the citizens are the first responders. Citizen bystanders are really necessary to make sure that we have positive outcomes, in particular in a medical incident. And so we want to recognize those efforts when we're made aware of them. And tonight, we're going to recognize Emma and Fisher for their good deed back in February, when there was an accident involving a trash truck, and the driver was injured, and they went to his aid. And they helped by staying with the driver and providing information to the dispatcher that was passing along to our crews that responded, and also helped clear debris away from the driver and help him shut the truck down. So they weren't just there to watch, they were there to help. And it's amazing when you see adults do it, but when you have younger adults, teenagers do it to make sure, that it really is special, and we want to recognize that. So tonight, we're here to recognize them for their efforts, and hopefully, they'll move forward and become firefighters. Mom and Dad. Are there any other family members? They can come too. That's okay.
Thank you. I just want to mention that any and all photos that are taken by the town of Gilbert tonight will be on the Town of Gilbert Facebook page later this evening, so you're welcome to go ahead and download them from there, too. That's what our great photographer's here for, so thank you. So this evening, I'm here to take a moment and thank our retiring educators this year with 20 years of service or more in their respective districts, because we have three school districts here in Gilbert, which a lot of people don't even realize. We're so grateful to them for building our future leaders. And unfortunately, Mayor Daniels couldn't be here this evening, but she did send a message to all of you.[1250.01][1250.01](Mandarin voice).
By accusing teacher staff and administrators and voluntary accounting residents tonight, happy great celebration and special congratulations to our students, but I want you to know how great children have all of these folks for all of Gilbert, for our future. Thank you, you and me. If you have a question, you can be hold on us for that. We'll try to cover it during the hour.
Go ahead, you can clap. I saw some people starting to clap. That's great.[1299.88][1299.88](Applause). So we'd like to honor you all this evening with a special plaque. And if I have any representatives from the school districts, I see Dr. Thomason here, if you'd like to come down and join me. If there's anybody here from the Chandler School District or Gilbert Public Schools, I don't see anyone. And I will name everybody as follows who RSVP'd to me, to us this evening. If I don't say your name, but you did receive a letter, please come down and join us, and we have plaques for you also. So from the Chandler Unified School District, with 20 years of service, we have Colette Congratulations, Colette. Thank you very much. Let's have a photo.[1341.58][1341.58](Mandarin voice). With 21 years of service from Chandler Unified School District, Kathleen Riegel.[1354.47][1354.47](Applause). With 21 years of service from Chandler Unified School District, Alex Zhang.[1376.65][1376.65](Applause). I hope I said your name correctly. From Gilbert Public Schools with 30 years of service, Gail Hummer.[1404.65][1404.65](Applause). With 21 years of service from Gilbert Public Schools, Natalie Lively.[1436.38][1436.38](Applause). Please feel free to come down and take a photo, too. That's fine. With 32 years of service with Gilbert Public Schools, Mary Dell Painter.[1473.47][1473.47](Applause). Wow, Mary Dell, 32, that's a long time.
Yeah, it's a long time.
Is there anyone else in the audience that received a letter? I don't want to miss anybody. No? Okay. Well, congratulations to all of the retirees. Thank you, Dr. Thomason. I appreciate your assistance. And good luck, and have fun with your future adventures.
And we'll have Frank Flores present on Residential Solid Waste Services in the
All right. Good evening. My name is Frank Flores. I'm the Environmental Services Manager for the Town of Gilbert. Vice Mayor, council members, and the Town of Gilbert residents, I'm here to present the Residential Solid Waste Services that the Town of Gilbert provides for its residents as it relates to other services or other services as they are provided throughout the state of Arizona. In providing our daily service, our department's visions are simple in following these guiding principles: serving the town residents with integrity, trust, and respect; provide the best service at a reasonable and sustainable cost to the town residents; and be best and plus. Who are we? We're a residential department made up of 67 full-time employees. The breakdown is 27 residential recycling drivers, 22 bulk drivers, or HEOs, or heavy equipment operators. We have eight administrative and supervision staff that provide support for our HEOs. And we have 10 employees that manage and provide support through our household hazardous waste facility, inspectors, and our environmental programs. What do we do? Well, currently, we provide weekly refuse recycling services to the town residents as mandated by Maricopa County. We provide a monthly brush and bulk household pickup service. We drop off compost bins for those residents that request it. We do a container cart delivery and maintenance on all the cart containers throughout the town. We provide our customer service and billing. We also offer a household hazardous waste drop-off at our facility down on Queen Creek and Greenfield. We do alley maintenance, and that's picking up large items as well, white goods, which are appliances, refrigerators, stoves, et cetera. We do those collections as well for our residents. And we're, we interact in community services and town events as far as the ongoing outreach and application for our residents. Realistically, there's three types of curbside service that is provided throughout the state of Arizona. The first one being what we offer here in the town of Gilbert, local government providing its own services. Secondly, local government enters an exclusive franchise with a private service provider. And open subscription, where private citizens contract with their own hauling and disposal company of choice. And just as a, as a point of reference, just to And just as a point of reference, just some of the towns and cities here in the state of Arizona, as far as who provides their own government-owned services and municipal providers there on your left, and the private sectors, the ones that were the cities actually franchise out and contract out to a franchise-exclusive hauler. Phoenix being the exception, they're on both sides of the spectrum there, where they do have the city parted out in certain zones, and part of those zones are provided by their own city services, and the others are franchised out to private haulers. Currently, as a town, we do have private sector partnership, and that's on the postcol collection, landfill disposal, transfer station, where we actually go and pick all our material, all our trash, and a material recovery facility, where we have a couple of options that we've been utilizing to take our recycling commodities. In this graph here, we see the certain, there's actually six different service levels or types of service that are provided. That blue being the weekly pickup, and again mandated by Maricopa County. All cities provide their residents with that service. That lighter blue being a free landfill drop-off, where again, we have the option to go out to the local landfill and take materials on our own. Monthly bulk pickup, and again, monthly being you get 12 services a year. If you take note there, down at the bottom, Chandler has a little candy cane stripe type of a bar. They offer eight services per year as far as bulk pickup. The green, light green, being a household hazardous waste facility, which the town offers. Free appliance pickup, we talked about the white goods. That's the purple there. And the compost bin, again, as per a resident's request. So, just to take note, really, the bottom two there, Gilbert and Chandler, are the, really, the two cities municipalities that do offer at some portion of all six of the services throughout. Mesa, as far as what we've learned, they provide the one weekly service, and that's a combination of their trash and recycling services. So what do the services cost? Again, just taking a look at our monthly cost, this graph is sorted from highest to lowest as far as the monthly cost for those services. If you recall back, I made note of the Mesa services as compared to where Gilbert and Chandler are, and you can take note that, albeit Gilbert provides the six levels of service, we are second from the bottom and three cents off from being the cheapest here in the local southeast part of the valley. One of the benefits that we do have as far as providing local town services is our community outreach and feedback. On this slide, you'll see that in 2015, the National Citizen Survey that was conducted, really, they selected the solid waste division as the third highest as far as the customer service-oriented town services here in the Town of Gilbert, which, for what they do day in and day out, it's quite an accomplishment, and proud of those guys. Also noted on there is our percentage of recycling participation, which is 68%. And for recycling services at a residential level, that's quite high, and that's quite an accomplishment. And again, that's a tribute to our outreach team and our educational programs. Just some comparisons of some of the options and some of the criterias, really illustrated here in a Signal platform. Green being where it's very good. The yellow-orange there being somewhat average, and then the red being, you know, a stop, a caution type of a look. So, safety, when you're looking at the three options of having your own local government providing the services, the franchise going out and having an exclusive franchise hauler. And then the third section there, the open subscription, is again, opening it up to any other haulers that a resident may want to subscribe to services to. Safety. I really wish we can look at more green there, but it being what it is, it's something that every hauling company, whether it's a local government or a franchise hauler, they strive to be very good at their safety, and, again, something we strive to turn that orange-yellow to green. When you look at the open subscription, it's red only because, again, you have a number of factors, and that being your increase of truck traffic, your increase of exposure of trucks running in any one neighborhood at any one day, at any one time. So really, the exposure increases for safety. Customer service and accountability and quality, again, it goes back to some of those customer outreach and comments that were provided on the previous slide. When we provide our own local services, we're interacting more day in and day out with our residents, and we hold ourselves accountable. We're able to provide that service at a certain level, knowing that what our mission and values are with the town, and it's something we strive for. You lose that interaction with you franchise out, or you open up for open subscription. Control services after hour emergencies, again, there are opportunities there for us to be responsive at a drop of a phone call. It's a lot higher than having out, or having franchise out to outside contracted services. Finding and controlling cost control. It being what it is, and you saw the slides earlier as far as the services we provide, I think the proof is there that we can provide those services at a very cost-controlled rate. The infrastructure, day in and day out, our trucks are out there, and the more trucks you have riding our town roadways, the more exposure you have to wear and tear and air quality control over our infrastructure. So, the more trucks you have with the open subscription as an option, again, red dot saying it's a big concern versus what we have in a franchise, because, in all fairness, you'd have about the same amount of trucks running around the town on any given day. And then I've talked about the community outreach and the interactions. Again, the previous slide really speaks for itself as far as what our environmental services solid waste division does and performs every single day. With that said, I'm open to any questions.
Are there questions from the council? Where would I find the data behind these, this matrix here? So where would I see communities that have open enrollment or open subscription have higher accident rates than communities that don't? Or where would I see, you know, people less happy with open enrollment than they are with no choice at all? I mean, where would I find that? Because, I mean, I see, I understand there's a viewpoint here, but I'm concerned that I don't know where the data would be to support some of these misinformation.
To respond to the safety perspective, it's, again, it's a numbers, it's a ratio. If we're running X amount of trucks on any given day, and in a franchise-exclusive hauler will be running X amount of trucks on any given day, when you open up the market to open subscription, where you have X in an open subscription, your, the probability of having X plus, one, two, three, four, five additional hauling companies, just increases. So, more trucks, more exposure, the higher the risk, safety becomes a concern.
I understand the rationale, but theories are one thing, actual data showing that that's what happens is another. One of the reasons I would question that is it would be very hard to make a living as a hauler unless you had a number of clients in the same area. So, if you're not pretty much servicing the area, which means you don't have two haulers in there anyway, you've got one. They're going to capture them that way just to compete, otherwise, price-wise, they can't. They can't afford to go service one person in a square mile once a week, once a month, or whatever it is. They can't do that. So, some of these things, I don't know that they actually end up happening, even though I can see the argument, I can see another argument. And so, maybe my theory's wrong, maybe yours is right, but until we have data, we don't know who's right. And so that's what I'm trying to understand, is if we have some data to kind of show that these things actually happen in these different scenarios.
Unfortunately, I don't have that with me here, Vice Mayor, but I do have a recent study that was performed in the city of Apache Junction by ASU in performing a sustainability study on their services that they provide there within their city. And that is, I wouldn't call it a full-fledged open subscription. From what I understand, I don't know the specifics to it, but they don't have an exclusive franchise hauler model, or their local government doesn't provide their own services there. So they do have a number of service providers within that city. And in that sustainability study, there was a large concern that stated in that study about some of these issues that, on items that I have touched on here.
I'd be interested in seeing that. I happen to know that we do have county islands in Gilbert, and there are some people who don't use Town of Gilbert trash services, and I don't hear a lot of instances of issues related to those private haulers. So I understand, but I'd like to have some data to help me see that. The goal today was an analysis of just providing an option. If you look at the agenda, the way the council asked for it, was an analysis of allowing citizens to opt out. And this helps maybe some, but I'm a little concerned that we still don't have the tools we need to make a decision. But I'll look to other council members, see if they have questions. Go ahead, Councilmember Cook.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Hey Frank, could you go back to the slide? It shows the cost amongst some of its modalities. So, this council loves to brag about having the lowest cost at the highest level of service. So, the question, I know we're close to Chandler, what's the business plan to beat them?
Well, again, in all fairness, we're not comparing apples to apples in that we do provide the 12 monthly bulk services versus the city of Chandler's eight provided services on an annual basis. So, there, when you look at a breakdown, as far as just looking at the bulk, they're providing for fewer services in a year versus what we do. So, you can look at that and say that there's...
Well, it sounds like we should probably make some adjustments to a different metric here, so that we actually move us to the bottom somehow. I mean...
Vice Mayor, members of council, if you remember from the previous study session when Kelly Foston Budget was looking at environmental compliance fees, one of the kind of side effects of the environment, instituting an environmental compliance fee would be a potential reduction in the environmental services residential rate, which would actually put us below that, depending on what that...
And again, I'm okay if you make some adjustments based upon, you know, if we're doing more than they are, that there's some, you know, some change here to this, because to me, I would love for us to be, you know, listed on the bottom here with that adjustment. So, I do look forward to the rate change as well, so...
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Cook. We'll definitely keep looking at that.
Councilmember Anderson, go ahead.
Just one comment. I know that in years past, as I've been around here for a while, this is almost an annual event to study whether or not private sector services can be offered at a less cost than what we're able to do here in Gilbert. And every year, it's come out that we are the best at doing what that service is calling for by our citizens, and I have to congratulate you for that. I know that that's, that was an annual event, I know, years ago, to look at whether or not we can do away with our services and go to the private sector, and you've always done a good job coming back with good numbers.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilmember Petersen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Frank, thank you for the detailed information. About a year ago now, gosh, time flies, I did a ride-along in three different trucks, a brand-new one, one that had the most mileage on it, and a roll-up, in one day, maybe about two and a half hours, and went and observed bulk trash pickup. And the work that our drivers are doing in a day's time amazed me. And so, for us to be able to talk about these statistics and how great our residents think that everything is because of what they do every single day, I commend you. I applaud you, and keep doing what you're doing. Councilmember Cook, I'll give you the three cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the kind words.
So I want to make it clear, I think we do a good job, but I know that there are some isolated cases where there are residents who cannot find a service with the Town of Gilbert that works for their situation. I know of a few, there's been some residents who have approached me throughout the years, and the kinds of things that we offer just don't work for them. They need something different, and they're forced into a situation, they have to pay the Town of Gilbert for trash service. And quite often, they'll contract with a private hauler as well to meet their actual needs. And I just think that's wrong. I'll just be clear, that's wrong. It's a protectionist policy. If this is obvious to everyone that we provide the best service at the lowest price, we have no reason to fear competition. We ought to allow people to opt out if they want to. Now, I know we can't make any official action because this is not agendized that way, but I want to make that very clear. We have, if this is all factual, we've got no reason to fear competition. There's no reason why we can't offer people the option to do something else if they want to. I would bet very few people will, but there may be, there will be a few, and I think it's worth it to allow them that opportunity. Anyway, if there's no other comments, we'll move forward with the agenda, but I'll check since somebody might want to rebut what I said. And that would be, that would be fine. Okay. All right. Thanks to everyone for your help on that item. What we're going to do now is invite all the scouts forward. I'm sorry.
We don't have any scouts.
We have no scouts.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. We don't, I think we might have one young gentleman in the back, but I think that he's not very anxious to come up. No, he's not. So I was going to ask, with your permission, that our vice chair from the Parks Board, Bob Farron, come down and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
That'll be great. We'll do that, and then we'll move forward, we'll have the invocation, I'll announce that next. Would all please arise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're going to have an invocation given by one of our local pastors, hopefully if he's here. Pastor Giesi, are you here? Oh my, I should have verified that before. An invocation can also be offered by a council member, and I wonder if Councilmember Ray would offer that. While he's heading down there, I'll just read this about the invocation. "Invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk, and interested persons should contact the clerk for further information." Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before Thee tonight. We are grateful for the many blessings that we enjoy. We're grateful to live in this great country, in this great state, and in this great community. We are grateful for the residents of the Town of Gilbert, for all that they do. We are grateful for the town employees, for the many efforts and their dedication to making such a great community. We are grateful for the first responders. We are grateful for the many blessings that we enjoy. We are grateful that we get to meet together to discuss town policies and decisions on behalf of the town. We ask for Thy guidance, for Thy help, and Thy support as we make these decisions. Bless us with wisdom, with patience, and with kindness in all that we do. In these things we say, and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen.
My sincere thanks to Councilmember Ray for stepping up on that. I should have verified our pastor was here. All right, the town clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels, Vice Mayor Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor. A quorum is present.
I've asked Councilmember Cook to perform duties for Vice Mayor. Are there any requests to speak tonight?
Vice Mayor, there are not tonight.
Okay, thank you. So this is normally the time for communications for citizens. I'll, just for the public's notice, at this time, this is when public can comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. So anybody that wants to speak, they would fill out a card, just so you know for next time. At this time, we will look to the consent calendar. All items listed are considered consent calendar items that may be approved by a single motion unless there's a request to remove an item by a council member for further discussion. And the other items may be added and approved also. I will look to Councilmember Cook and see if there were any requests
Vice Mayor, I have no request of any of the items to be polled.
Is there a motion then?
There is a motion. I'd like to move that we approve Agenda Item 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11, and there was an addendum of
8A.
Second.
All right, there's a second. Go ahead and vote. That's all of us. That's a 5-0 vote. Thank you. Motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Excuse me. Got to get used to how you do this. All right, it is time for items for the public hearing. Items will be heard at one public hearing. And again, if you'd like to comment, you can request to do so in the public comment form. And I will see if there are any requests to speak on any public hearing items. I'm not aware of any either. Are there any requests from council members on any public hearing items? Seeing none, I think we would entertain a motion to, for, I'm sorry. I opened the public hearing on Items 12 and 13, and I closed the public hearing on Items 12 and 13, and we're ready to entertain a motion. Thank you for helping.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve Items, Agenda Items 12 and 13.
Second.
Okay, we've got a second. Please vote. That passes with a 5-0 vote. Thank you. All right, just about there here. All right, we are on to Item 14, Reports from Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Are there any reports from our liaisons tonight? Seeing none. I think we're almost there. We just have communications from, our town manager's not here. Mark, do you have anything on behalf of the town manager tonight?
Vice Mayor, I have one item. It's just a reminder to the mayor and the council, as well as the public, we're holding a public open house on the Lindsay Interchange Concept Design Report. That is on June 14th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Southeast Regional Library. More information on our website.
Thank you, Mark. We really do try our best to make sure the public has opportunity to input on important items like that, and we appreciate staff and their efforts for continuing that public outreach. We really do welcome and want the input, so thank you for reminding us of that, Mark. Are there any reports from the council on current events? Councilmember Cook.
Vice Mayor, I did forget, I should give the council an update on the special subcommittee for the Sign Code. We have now met twice. We have been diligent working with staff. We've completed with staff all of the changes or discussion changes with staff in our next meeting, which will be at Wednesday at 4:30. And again, the meeting is public. We will go through a matrix that staff will have compiled, and staff is doing an excellent job in capturing all of those requests.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook, being on the subcommittee myself. I appreciate the opportunity to go through that. We've had some good discussions so far. I missed one of the meetings, but I was there for the other one, and it's been good. So thank you for that. Are there any other? Councilmember Peterson.
Vice Mayor, I just wanted to mention that I think all of our schools are out of session now for the summer, and I'd really just like to encourage people to drive slowly, pay attention to what you're doing. People are out on bicycles. We had an unfortunate incident yesterday. Let's just be aware of our surroundings and everything that's going on. There are a lot more people out on the streets and the sidewalks enjoying their summertime, so let's let that continue to happen. Thank you.
Councilmember Cook.
One more comment, Vice Mayor. I did attend the Gilbert Public Schools Board Meeting this last week. There were two highlighted events that I like to share with the public. The first one, Dr. Kishimoto is resigning as of June 30th, and from my understanding, she is going to accept a position as a superintendent in the state of Hawaii. The second event was that the Gilbert Junior High School, those students were going to be moved or relocated to Mesquite Junior High, and the students with the Gilbert Classical Academy are going to occupy the Gilbert Junior High. So that decision was made by the governing board as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. We wish Dr. Kishimoto the very best in her future ventures, and we appreciate the update on that. Are there any other current events? Seeing none. This is probably going to be my one and only chance to do this, so I'm going to use the gavel and call the meeting adjourned.
Mark, do you want Jared's book with you since he's not here?
Yeah.
And Jen's?
I'll grab those two.